Okay, I'd like to call our meeting order for November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We'll start with the pledge. Okay, warrant bill's assigned.
Yes.
Yep. Fill the agenda.
Make a motion, approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Minutes of the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes from the November eighth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Don't administer it, weekly update.
All right, just a couple things tonight to keep it short. First, we wanted to publicly thank the fire department and the previous Toys for Tots program that they had. You may know, you may recall that over the years, the fire department did Toys for Tots. As people change and kids got older, they've decided to dissolve that. And what was in a specifically designed designated Toys for Tots account, they have donated that balance of three thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars to our neighbors helping neighbors to continue with that type of need. So they've closed out the account and brought a check to the town that we put in that account. So, thank you for that.
Do they still do that, fire truck around around town?
No. Uh, next is, last week, we had a conversation about health and dental benefits that main municipal was offering at a hundred percent cost to the employee. Tom asked for a little additional information. They probably reached out to main municipal, there really wasn't a whole lot more, but I just emailed you guys a thread, so ask you to take a look at it and we'll put it on the next meeting that we have coming up.
Anything of interest in there?
No, there's
Pretty straightforward.
There is no cost to the town. I mean, you would have to vote to, you know, it's something the employee would pay a hundred percent of.
But
Vision and dental.
If we decide, we told him, you know, sure, go ahead and do it, it's nothing to us anyways.
No, you're not committing
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't some
No.
Something that could claw back to us when it don't look like it. Okay, good.
So as I understand from speaking her today, open enrollment actually starts today. She's going to be sending a memo out to all the staff. So with your approval, that'll be something that we can offer at a hundred percent employee cost.
Would you like that approval tonight?
Sure.
In order to move this along?
That'd be great.
Make a motion that we implement a dental and vision plan
Right.
With mess
Main municipal?
Main municipal.
Effective January first?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Perfect, so we'll add that, thank you. The, um, by now, you should have seen the timeline for the school. And Dan may give a little more of an update, but we did receive a school timeline for their town meeting and they're hoping that's going to be on March nineteenth. So we really need to start having a conversation as to whether or not we are piggybacking, putting town articles on there, if we're doing our own, or what's that timeline going to look like? So, doesn't necessarily have to be tonight, but as Mark is here to talk about the budget, many conversations we've had, we need a starting point to count backwards from. Shouldn't put a timeline together, so we can't do that without an election date.
Did you say March nineteenth?
Yes.
When have they historically done that? There you go, you got the data right there.
I got the data right there, so, um, just real quickly. So in two thousand twenty-three, the school board referendum was on May second. In two thousand twenty-two, the school budget vote was on April twenty-sixth. And in two thousand twenty-one, the school budget was on April twenty-seventh.
So it's within a couple weeks of each other, so.
Have they explained why they weren't done in March?
Um, possibly Dan can add to that, he was at the meeting, I just got the memo.
Yeah, the only explanation of the date is that they kind of just looked at the process and they kind of worked backwards, so the dates when they could get it the soonest. So they didn't really give anything beyond that explanation when I asked.
About a month early looks fine.
I mean, myself, if we were, I think everybody knows my thoughts are about changing town meeting earlier than whatever. I like June, but if we do go to that process where we end up hitting the school, I mean, myself, what they normally do would be better for our budgeting, you know, give us more time.
You mean, end of April?
End of April, beginning of May, yeah.
It makes sense for me, too.
I know they had some concerns, the only concern really was la- I think it was last year where because it happened after school vacation, they're concerned that like people kind of forgot and got like lackadaisical, and so that's why as soon as vacation was over, they had Mr. Ross and other teachers out kind of advertising it, so maybe.
When is that school vacation week? Isn't it the third week of April?
Well, there's one in February and one in April.
I think it's, I think it's the April one that they're referring to, so maybe looking to before. I think that might be something, but
Maybe the weekend before that?
Yeah, but either, either way, I think March would be, like weather wise, too. We know in May, we still have a lot of snow.
Oh, you're a little more on the clear.
Or May first, whatever. I personally think it would be advantageous for residents to be able to come, see the entire town budget in one setting and vote on it. I, I, as a resident, I think that's a better process. I would hope there would be some explanation so that people can see what the rate of increase is. I might go so far as to say, given if we approve this, this is what the estimated tax rate is, people ought to have all the information they should have to make an informed decision and do it all at one setting. That's my own personal view. So, uh, I'd, I'd like to keep the dialogue open with the school and see if we can't come to some
Maybe Dan and I can reach out to them.
Does that make sense?
I think it makes sense, I think the only, because we, we had a little bit of discussion back and forth in regards to thoughts, and I think one of the biggest concerns, which I think is very valid, but I told them that we would be open to trying to find solutions, it's just the length. They said that if you think of having everything from the school and everything from the town, we already have people complaining about town meeting being so long.
Yeah.
You add that, but like I, I told them at the meeting that we, we were looking at options.
That's the only reason people didn't go to town meeting, because it was on Father's Day weekend.
Well, and, and what they may not know, too, is that with Mr. Roy's help this year, we're going to be looking at consolidating several of those warrant articles. So possibly, we can, you know, we can address that by having it less articles.
I, I think we could also, if the school, you know, would prefer, I wouldn't have a problem putting their warrant up first as the first item.
Yeah.
Unless there's some technical reason not to do it.
Typically, we normally do the planning
And so, if, you know, that way, if people just want to vote on the school warrant, they can, they can, and if they don't want to hang around, they can, they can exit.
Typically, we do the, um, you know, zonal ordinances first. And, but we're, I, I was talking to Jen about this earlier today. What I'm worried about, if we, we move that date up like March or April, you know, cramming it down, down their throats, getting something put forward that, what we may have to do is have a separate thing for the zonal ordinance later on. So maybe even exclude them out of that.
Why don't we, why don't we ask the planning board if they feel they're going to have any, um,
Articles.
Any new articles?
I spoke to Jason, he's going to speak to the committee this Thursday and get a feel for where they might be at. So I'll be able to bring you more information.
Well, this may be a good year if they're not going to be doing much to, to move that forward. And to be honest with you, I'd put the zoning at the end.
And you've still got the election of
You know, put it at the end and get, get all the money taken care of right up front and, um, and then have any remaining articles at the end.
See, I'm the opposite. I think everybody should be there for the zoning, because that affects it.
Well, I, I hope they stay around for the whole thing, David.
Yeah, well, you know, that's what happened.
Don't forget your committees, that we have to, you know, we elect those at town meeting.
Yeah.
You want to finance, we're committed to that, really should be first, so, all right.
Okay, we'll have to
Dan and I, welcome back.
I'm sure.
Um, so last thing is just a reminder that there is no Board of Selectmen's meeting next Wednesday. However, we are still working hard on our Thanksgiving baskets and dinner. So if you haven't made plans yet, this is the place to be.
Okay. Okay. Department head, committee chair updates?
Will Langley, road commissioner, uh, we got all of our shoulder and done today. We got, uh, Peck Road done, uh, Buzzard Road's done, West Shore Drive is done. I, I gotta bring the machine back tomorrow anyway, because we ended up having an issue with it, so they need to look at it, so they're just going to credit me a day with the machine and everything, so, um, that's done. What else? I gotta go up to the end of Peck Road tomorrow, it's starting to wash out pretty bad up to the end. So we shouldered up to the end and we're just going to go up there and ditch it tomorrow and put some riprap in up there, all the way up towards the end, all the water coming off the hill and everything.
Right hand.
Yeah, the right hand, going around the corner. And then, uh, also, like right before you get to West Shore Drive, that swamp right there on the left-hand side, uh, right, where you get to, right before you turn to West Shore Drive, the little swamp on the left-hand side. Yeah, that culvert was, uh, the beavers have gotten in there, so I trapped a bob, dropped them all out. We got that all unplugged today, just with the rain coming and everything, I didn't want no issues.
It was all backed up.
Yeah, so we got
Is it on goosebumps?
Yeah, the culvert that goes on the roof, we got that all done and everything, and, uh, so yeah, we, we should be in pretty good shape at the end of the week, so.
I thought we would have checked that when they're doing the bridge project, because that's where the water goes.
No, but it's, it's flowing again, like two people have called me about it, so I, I happen to just have my machine there, so we're, we're all set, so.
Thanks, Will.
And, and the, uh, and the shed is done? The I'm sorry, you're going to
Oh, I was thinking of a different shed.
I was talking about the rec field shed, but if you're going to cover that, that's fine.
Actually, come on up, Will. We'll, we'll cover it right now, we're already talking about it. Is it, is it on here, or is someone here anyways?
No.
So, uh, you went and repaired the pad for the
Yeah, I went yesterday afternoon and, uh, uh, we dug the loom off and put stone in and everything for it, made it a little bit bigger. I think we went like, uh, I think it was like sixteen by twenty-four, just with the eaves and everything, so the water could be on it, and, uh, I think Sam sent some pictures this morning, so, uh, it's on there and looks pretty good to me, so.
So, what, what ended up happening was, um, I met with the rec committee, we went over where we were going to put this and that, while, a little communication issue, and ended up, they wanted, we were going to put the shed at the left-hand corner inside the fence. And, um, and I guess we, I, when I, we were talking about it, I wasn't, I wasn't aware it was going to come this quick. So we, I thought we were going to be able to put, build a road in there first, because we needed, we're going to be putting, when we put the new parking lot in, my idea was to build a little access road up to the, up to the gate on that side, because they're, they're gonna, they want to put a playground in, they were talking about putting a playground in that corner, fence it in, so we figured that would be the best place for the, uh, the shack, so, you know, instead of having it next to the basketball court and stuff, so basketball didn't bounce off it all day long. And, uh, but because of the timing of the shed coming so soon, uh, they, even though the rec committee had voted to put it in that spot for temporarily, we're going to put it, they put it up behind the basketball court, and when the parking lot's put in, we will end up putting it back down below afterwards. So, um, we want to make sure that the, uh, um, the rec committee knows that this wasn't a decision that we wanted to go behind their back and make, it was a last-minute decision. So, um, it will end up at the other corner when the parking lot's done.
So is Will going to have to redo the
All it is, is just a little
Slab or whatever that is.
Thing of stone, yeah.
Okay, so he's just going to have to redo that again down at the other
Yeah, so when, when the parking lot's put in and the little access road's made over there, we'll ship it across. We, we're worried about going across the field with the trucks to get to the other end.
And, well
The, uh, temporary rule, we could have gone in, I, we could, I will make a rule to get in, but it worked out the way it is right now, but it will, this is, this is temporary, so, thank you. Where are we now?
Liaisons.
Liaison, okay, we have liaisons now. Any updates?
Um, I attended the school board meeting, um, last week where we talked about kind of, they kind of went over their budget, budget process, talked about the progress of their students for their math and reading, and talked about the, a little bit about the basketball team.
Sure, fire department. Um, I met with the chief last Thursday afternoon. Got a meeting at three, got out of there about six, so we talked about, about everything under the sun. Budgets a little bit, trucks a little bit, manpower, we, we just took quite a discussion, so. Um, all things that'll come up during budget season, pretty much, um, or may not. So, you know, some things, some things that I, I just need to, I need to talk to him a little bit more on his wish list. So, but it was a good discussion. Told him kind of where we are and where things are. Uh, there was a company in there, UPF, is the company that built the tank for the new tank truck. They were a subcontractor of Rosenbauer, so that's where the tank comes from. Uh, they've been having an issue with the new tank truck, that every time it makes a turn, it dumps, you know, fifty-plus gallons of water on the ground. So, yeah, that's real bad, not so much in the summertime, but it's not great in the winter. So, and it gets rid of water that you need, so. The truck had gone down to the dealer, they have some work done to it. There's been a lot of back and forth, the chief has been adamant that this needs to be fixed. So, they, uh, last week, Wednesday and Thursday, they sent a rep from, well, not even a rep, but a, uh, a technician from UPF, and the local Rosenbauer dealership had a mechanic come up and another rep from Rosenbauer directly. And what they did was, they relocated the vent in the top of the tank. There's a tower in the top of the tank that allows the air to go in. As a, as a water goes out, you got to replace it with air. Um, the problem was, is when they make a turn or they step on the brakes, all the water would surge forward, and that's where the vent was. So it would naturally all come out. So they moved the vent back, this tank is made of plastic, and they have a way of welding plastic, and they did it right at the station and put a new tower back further. I believe they closed off the other one. I haven't heard, I haven't heard any complaints yet, let's put it that way. So, but they're going to do some more driving around and testing.
I know back when my father was road commissioner, I got a phone call one night, it says, uh, we gotta go sanding. And it hadn't snowed in three days, the roads were dry, and I thought he was crazy, so I jumped in my truck and I'm looking for ice, and we found ice. Wherever there was a hill, there was a big streak of ice right down the hill.
Yeah.
What happened was, nearby towns were coming in for mutual aid, coming out of Wakefield and Newfield and all that, and every time they come down the hill, hit the brakes, it's got water right down the road and black ice all over town.
Today's technology, there's no reason for that. So, uh, so they've been working on that. The other truck, they were just waiting on the parts to come in for the pump, and then it'll be shipped out.
So they had the budget for all of these modifications and
Well, that was part of the
That was all part, it was all warranty.
It was all warranty.
Yep, everything to do with that is warranty, because that truck is
I didn't know if the warranty ran out three years ago when we ordered it.
Yeah, when we ordered it, no. We didn't get the truck till what, last January? And then it was gone for about four months over the summer to try to fix this, so. Yeah, I know this is all the warranty work and
Good.
Yeah, so, yeah, that pretty much was the discussion I had with him, like I said, we're going to have some more.
Jennifer and I met with Mike about the APAP budget and some of the technology opportunities there. Had a good discussion and will be hearing more about that in future meetings. Kelly's been very busy, we had, I think we spent some time with, uh, with Will, make sure that we're all understand, you know, what the, what the schedule is for when payments need, invoices need to be submitted, and make sure that he's getting paid on a timely basis when he needs to. Uh, there was some, uh, there was a week or two missed there, and, and, but I think we figured out how to stop that problem. And so, thanks to Kelly for her efforts to bring that all together.
I, other than, um, I think we already gave, I already gave the update on the shed. Shed was delivered up to the, um, rec field, so that's already done. And then I don't have any update. So I guess we'll move down to old business, traffic detail.
Yes. We've been talking about, actually, we had some residents come in, um, and we, you know, you just, you, you read social media in town and uh, we had a resident come in a couple weeks ago, and, uh, in addition to that, there have been a number of comments on social media, um, about the, uh, the speed at which vehicles are traveling on town roads and a feeling that residents are feeling unsafe. And this can be coming from, uh, passenger vehicles as well as trucks. So the thought was that perhaps we could benefit from having some extra detail duty of the, uh, of the deputy to provide some additional patrolling in town specifically designed to deal with traffic enforcement. Uh, we, Jennifer approached the sheriff about it. The sheriff shared his thoughts with him, and I think, uh, he, he laid out what the cost would be of, you know, additional detail and, what was that, eighty-five dollars an hour?
Eighty-five to a hundred and ten, depending on
But I thought he said the approval rate was eighty-five. So he seemed, I didn't quite know what the, the range was all about, but maybe it had to do with who the officer was. And, but he also laid out his thoughts about how, uh, he thought it would be, uh, more economical and in our best interest to consider, uh, perhaps going full-time for acting alone. I think those, that's a consideration and maybe some other configuration. Like a full-time deputy for acting alone, that was what
Buying chaplains twenty hours.
Buying chaplain out, and so we
That's different than what you're looking at that.
No, I'm sorry, that, that we would then have a full-time officer, and, well, first off, we haven't got the budget for that, and we can't move forward with that now. And I think as we've talked about the whole, um, policing in town and, 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 uh, the need for, uh, coverage, I think there are some alternative models that we got to look at before we just kind of jump and say, okay, we want a full-time officer in town. So until we get through that, I would, I would suggest that we, um, begin to work with the depe- uh, with the sheriff's office to start having additional details, and, um, maybe we do a, perhaps a four-hour shift? Additional four hours, maybe, you know, let's start out with two or three times a month. And, um, and hopefully, he's doing that in areas where, uh, he's likely to get the biggest advantage. And I think we know where those areas are.
I think, I think one issue I have is, like, Sunday morning, when I'm driving down Milton Hills Road at six o'clock and the sheriff's sitting on the side of the road on Sunday morning at six o'clock, right? Whether or not that's the best usage of our time, our deputy, I don't know.
Yeah.
And then you turn around and then say, okay, we're going to go buy some more time, so when's he going to do that? Sunday, Sunday afternoon? You know, I mean, uh, I just, eighty-five bucks an hour. We, we've got to come up with an alternative, period. Because I, I just, I just don't feel right about the way that the negotiations have gone the last couple of years, and it's going to be a very expensive proposition for us to continue on with. And, you know, if we do the forty, I say we got forty hours, um, we're not going to have full coverage for forty hours for fifty-two weeks of the year.
I know.
These people take vacations, they get sick, this and that. I mean, it depends where we want to go with this.
I, I just think that's a broader discussion, one that I think we ought to move on.
Yeah.
And it, and it's going to take some time, and we're going to have to work that through the budget process and get approval for. I personally have experienced it in town, you know, I felt like I was being run off the road. And I, I've talked to other people, and I think this is a serious issue in town. And so I, I, I think we need to demonstrate that we're, they're responding to this. This is, this is one way to respond, maybe there are others, but I think while we're still studying alternative, you know, policing structures in town, I think we need to take some action to send a message to, to residents that we take it seriously and we're trying to address it. So that's my take on it, so I'll stop there and
So, so you're, what are you looking, you, you like another couple hours, how many hours a week?
You know, I'm, you know, I, I would start out with twelve hours a month.
A month.
A month, and, you know, maybe three, four-hour sessions, and, um, perhaps there's somebody who could, uh, uh, help the sheriff figure out when that ought to be and where that ought to be. I'm probably not the best person to do that, but to see if we get the best bang for the buck. I was kind of surprised, I saw the deputy, I think on Sunday, patrolling, which I, I thought he was like five days during the week.
Well, you got to remember that even though you're paying county tax as well, so even when your contract deputy is not working, someone's always covering acting.
Oh, okay.
Your deputy contract schedule changes, he goes from weekdays to weekends, days and nights.
But he was actually sitting doing traffic.
Did it say acting chaplain on the side of the door? Because it may not have been him.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm saying, there's other deputies covering.
That's fine, so, um, you know, the details could be worked out.
See if they could have been, could have been the regular one, you, we don't see him that often, so when you see him, it's like, okay, but I just caught that the other morning, it's like, you know, being a cop at six o'clock on a Sunday morning, there's still a whole lot of traffic, you know.
And remember, they're using the station across the street as well, so there are several different deputies in the area.
Ah, okay, oh, oh, they're using that, I didn't realize that. So, um, I, uh, you know, we should have some more discussion, but what I'd like to do is make a motion to authorize an additional twelve hours a month, uh, for detailing of a, of a, uh, of a deputy to add additional, um, traffic, um, traffic
Yeah, my question is, you give us a range, what would the price be?
I thought we said we had
I mean, there are, yeah, there are several different places in municipal management that we probably could. I mean, when he looked through the report today that Mr. Roy sent, I mean, there were several that were not even, you know, that were seventy percent and should have been at sixty, so, I mean, we'd look at a close line for that before we, he was looking for your, your support first.
So no long-term commitment, let's try it for a month.
They have to be four-hour blocks, so.
One month isn't going to kill us, let's see how it works.
So you're saying this would be just for the month of December, and then
I'm sorry?
So this would be for the month of December is what we're looking at?
Yeah, yeah.
Come back and see how it works? It's like, the range, do we know what we'd be paying, like the eighty-five or the hundred and
Well
It's right around eighty-five dollars an hour, that's
I thought it's eighty-five, yeah.
He talked about overtime and, and he, there was additional cost.
Twelve hours at eighty-five is, what's that, around a thousand dollars?
Four-hour, four-hour minimums.
Four-hour minimums, that comes from the sheriff's department.
How much? So less than a thousand dollars?
I think it's fine if we're doing a temporary and kind of see how it goes, and, and I think, like, you said, it's something that a lot of people have brought up, and we want them to know that we're listening and hearing what they're saying, so I'm, I'm fine with that.
I like the idea, because it's short-term, I mean, we're not locking into
No.
Any big long-term thing, it's, we do it once and find that it works, and, yeah.
I'm going to say yay on this.
Yeah.
But we, we really got to get working on those signs, the speed limit signs and things. I think that's somewhere where we really got to put some money, you know, I
We had a comment, we had that conversation last week, and, okay, so, I'm sorry, so just to catch you up, I mean, the, the company, the company is pretty confident that, that we bought that sign from, that they'll come out and look at it, and they think they can get it working with their IT people. However, you had to commit a number to the five hundred dollars. So we've reached out to them and said, listen, you know, it's five hundred dollars to get you out there, whether you can fix it or not, can you, you know, if you can't fix it, can you give us the five hundred dollar credit towards the purchase of another one? We're waiting for a response, but they, they want to come out and look at it, but I couldn't get the board to commit this five hundred last week to get them out here. So if you want to, I mean, we got to start somewhere getting that sign fixed, that's really the best
Well, I mean, I thought we were going to go a different direction.
We gave them numbers last week, they're a little over four thousand dollars each, is what Sanford paid for their
But if we could get it fixed for five hundred.
Yeah, I mean
I mean, you got to
Because the new one is like four thousand?
Well, it sounds to me like if we paid a thousand dollars to fix it, it'd be cheaper to buy one.
Yeah.
Right, and that's what's
So, what do we, what do we, what do we up the ante to, a thousand dollars?
So you have a motion, have that motion first, that Tom made for the blocks. It didn't get a second.
For which?
For your four-hour block, right in the middle of that motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize engaging, uh, a deputy sheriff for a total of twelve hours for the month of December.
Second.
Uh, do you want any discussion on this, or?
Yeah, let's do public comment on this.
And then David will have a motion for the five hundred.
Yeah, then I'll make the motion after, any public comment? Nope? Okay, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you, sorry, David, I was getting mixed up.
Yeah, that's all right, uh, no help in the situation here.
And then the repair?
So, on the repair, the, uh, the old one, um, I would say just get this moving along, why don't we, if, they're saying five hundred dollars is what?
Just to get them out there and try to fix it.
Okay, um, you know, so that, in case it costs a little bit extra, why don't we, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, approve a thousand dollars, uh, for the, fixing the new the old speed limit, um, in there.
Yep.
It's been moved in second, I guess, so.
All in favor? Okay, see if we get that ball rolling. And, uh, where are we now? Done with that, Sabago Technics.
All right, very quickly on these, so we can get to Mr. Roy. Road assessment is still out, so we're just waiting for that. Second is the rec project, I did speak to David briefly, and when Sabago Technics comes in town to do their last roads that he mentioned last week, David is going to meet with them regarding the rec and get a last update on that. So the only other one was the transfer station, we talked about maybe having a public hearing on that to look over the three designs, once David had a chance, and you were, Ed was going to meet with Robin.
Yeah, I haven't done that yet.
So, uh, maybe we can plan on getting all that accomplished at the next meeting after the holiday.
Do we have a public hearing on, on the, uh,
Yes, the twenty-ninth.
The D O five station?
November twenty-ninth.
Could we do two of them?
I mean, you could, I've already been advertising that one, it ran in newspaper and
I'm just thinking if, you know, we're going to get people out when I talk about both of them.
We'll get it added.
We should be able to be ready by then.
Yeah, you
What is that date, by the way?
That was the twenty-ninth, but last week you indicated that you wanted, uh, numbers to see which proposal you were moving forward first.
Some sort of estimate.[1757.11]
Could let them see all the options.
Yeah, yeah, at least get their comment on it, yeah.
So we're gonna add it to the, to the twenty-ninth, gentlemen?
Sorry.
We're gonna add the public hearings, we have the old fitness center, it's future, and now we're gonna add the three different proposals for the transfer station on that public hearing.
Will we have any sort of numbers by then, do you think, or...
Well, I mean, Subaco is, I mean, not, not really, I mean, not what it's...
Probably not.
No.
Well, we could do it as a separate one, it just seems like...
But you want to spend the time on numbers before you really find out which direction that they even like?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, at the end of the day, I don't like any of them, so...
And, and he did say...
Because he didn't even look, but I told him what I, what I was proposing, that's absolutely not what I...
Right.
I mean, make a road all the way up around the hillside like that, I mean, I, it don't even make sense.
When I asked him last week, he said there was a range.
He's got it all, except he's missing the road right here, because of the whole idea with the bypass, everything here, go to the metal bin, people go by that, oh, no.
Well, you want to work with him on that?
Nope, so I'm not the liaison, so...
Oh, okay.
So we'll have a public hearing and maybe he'll add that road and, um...
A thousand feet of road all through the woods for nothing, you know, so, but, um...
But I think that's one of the reasons why we wanted numbers, so we could see the high cost and then if there's middle...
Go ahead.
So I think that's one of the reasons, at least I wanted to see some estimates and numbers, because he said those are both extremes and that there were things that could be done in the middle, and I wanted to see those costs, like, okay, how much would it be to start making some changes?
See, the engineer will give you some costs, but I think we found out in the past, like our, our bridge over here in Wester Drive, when they start throwing numbers around, they're just throwing stuff at the wall and see if it sticks. What we gotta do is look at our best option here, what we think is gonna be the most, and then we gotta send it out and get bids and get real numbers on it, because, because we don't want to throw numbers out there unrealistic.
That's true.
And we scare off people too at the same time.
And they can be unrealistic in each direction.
And most of the time they are.
Yeah.
So, Robin?
Tom mentioned last week about looking at that lower gate. I don't think, you know, if we do the around, the bout thing like they approved last week, they gave us the plan up and around, I think it, it's not that bad coming in from that lower gate, making a swing turn and kind of staying away from the capped area, just come right up by the, where the leaf pile is now.
Yeah.
I think we need to investigate that, what Tom mentioned last week.
You know, that lower...
I know the lower gate, I also know the grade of the driveway to get to the lower gate.
Yeah, but it, it's, I don't, it's really don't, it's very confusing looking at it from the gate, but I don't think it would be that much of a...
That's, that's a huge incline from the bottoms to the top.
But if you cut it, if you cut it down, take all that...
You can't cut anything down here, Robin, that, none of that can be disturbed on the right-hand side, so that's all a link cap thing.
Has anybody talked to the E, DEP where we can and where we can't? That's my question.
If you lower that down there, you're gonna disturb the capped areas, there's no way you can with the...
Do we know where the cap area is, for sure? So you can go there, you can go up there and tell me from point A to point B, this is where it's capped?
You do...
Is there any plans? I don't have any plans, that's why I want to know if DEP...
Where the grassed area that we have to mow once a year, that's the capped in area.
Okay, I'm talking about where the, where the leaf pile is and where we're dumping the cement blocks and that sort of stuff.
Okay, so you want...
Not, not over there.
So you don't want to use the original road that was there then?
Yes.
You do or don't?
Do.
The bottom part, not the top?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, I think the engine, I think Tom has a good idea to have the engineers take a look at that and find out, have them contact DEP or we contact DEP to find out exactly where that cap is.
Everything down on that left-hand side where the fire pit is, towards the, is all filled in.
I'm not saying, you know, I think we need to do that step, that's all I'm saying. I think we need to go to DEP.
Did anybody, when you talk, when you met with the engineer?
Yeah.
Who met with the engineer?
I did, the first day he, they hired.
Did you, did you, did anybody go over the route that we had discussed before about trying to convert, so people could go drop off their metal and drive through the road that we were talking about originally?
No, there was no roads originally.
I, when I went over it with you, when I, when I was...
It was a ramp, it was a ramp to go...
Yeah, you know where the ramp was?
Right.
Is, we talked about making it so the traffic go up and around there to bypass everything else. It's kind of like what they originally did here.
Right, on, on the...
On the third page, this one, uh, is it third?
No, second page.
Oh, it's the last one of mine anyways.
Oh, well, it's on second on mine.
What they did is they ran everything through here, okay, go like this, and then one go around this way.
Right, that's the one that goes up over around the ledges.
We talked about going like this, come like this, and then making it so people could bypass or go up over around the metal thing, so people go to recycling, there's no way to get back out of the recycling the way they got it here.
I still would recommend that we get DEP involved and find out exactly where the cap is and where we can dig and where we can't dig. That's all I'm saying.
What does it mean to get them involved? Is it simply asking them, because they have, they have plans they can share with us at no cost? Is that what you're telling me?
That's, the guy's right in Portland, I talked to him when I was up to the, up to the, to the thing, and he said, give us a call, we'd be gladly to come down and help you. Because he found out that we were doing this project, and I went to the, the conference up in Sun, where it was up there, and he said, just give me a call and we'll come down and work with you. We'd rather work with you now than come down and say, hey, we're fining you ten thousand dollars because you didn't do... That's all I'm asking, is just let's get DEP involved and find out where the cap actually is. Because nobody in this building knows where the cap actually is, that's all I'm saying.
I don't think it would hurt, I mean, it'll give us some clear answers.
Yeah, because I know the people kept it.
Yeah.
I used to work for.
Charlie?
Yeah, what I wanted to know is, are there copies of those plans available for public viewing?
They will be, we just got them, we got them last week, David got them tonight for the first time, so as soon as they set the public hearing, they were gonna be placed on the town's website.
Well, before the public hearing, so people actually have a time to digest it.
Yeah, we're just waiting for them to pick a date and we'll get them on tomorrow.
My only reaction is, I think, but my thought on that is that given the reaction we've had to those doc, to those drawings, I'm not sure it does, it advances it a lot to put those out there at this time where the board, I don't think we're, have any consensus on any of this at this point, so...
Yeah, I don't think we're close enough.
I wouldn't put it out yet, Charlie, not that we're, I, I think it's a good idea when we get to a point where we think we have something that we want to, you know, start to advance, I would agree it ought to be put out. But for right now, I would not, I, I don't like anything in there, David's saying he doesn't like anything in there, I, I don't know about you two.
I'm happy.
Why would we put them out and then people saying, what are you doing? Well, we don't really want to do that, that doesn't, you know, there's no point getting into that.
See her back in before we schedule a public hearing, because he's right, if we have a public hearing, we've got to have plans to have to review.
Unfortunately, Charlie, what happened is with, obviously somebody should, some, someone on the board should have gone up with them, okay, and kind of gone over some ideas with them, because I think they're just shooting them in the hip on this. I mean, when I met with the individual in the office, I explained to him what I, what we were trying to accomplish here. And nothing, this is nothing like we talked about.
So Robin has suggested something.
Yeah.
We know we need to circle back to Subaco. Who on the board has got this one?
I do.
Okay, there you go.
So, public hearing on the twenty-ninth, yes or no at this point?
Still have a question. If you're not happy, then...
No.
No, okay.
Okay, we will get them out, Charlie, they're just not ready for...
I still have another question.
All right.
Or a comment, rather.
Yeah.
Regarding the maps and instructions from DEP, that was provided to Jennifer back in the spring from DEP, via me, through me, because I talked to them, and there's a PDF map of the layout of where the landfill is, what's capped, what's not. Are there exact survey markers? No, even according to DEP. The map that, that's provided is exactly what they have.
Okay.
And that's the accuracy that they're gonna be able to provide you. As a taxpayer and someone who paid some of the money to pay for that, I would like to know if I could get a copy just for my own personal engineering pleasure.
If you, if you want to look at it, you can, fine, because it's probably not gonna go anywhere with it, but you can.
No, and...
Honestly, Charlie, you're an engineer, right?
Previous life.
Well, still alive, so, still an engineer, I'm sure. Maybe you can give us some insight on what you, if you believe this is feasible.
Would love to, but I'd like to see the drawings first.
I'll get you the drawings.
As long as you understand here, Charlie, you can have these.
I have no issue with that.
Because I don't think they're going, I don't...
I just want to make sure that nobody thinks this is stolen.
Yeah, as long as people are...
No, understood, understood. Preliminary drawings can still be beneficial.
As long as you understand what they are, that's fine.
Yep, preliminary. I think what we gotta do is we gotta get on the same page with them.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Okay, because I don't want to spend two million dollars to build a road and go around, that's all ledge and, I mean, all mine. And on something there that honestly, we're trying to, you know, the problem we're trying to solve here is two weekends at a year. Okay, I don't want to spend two million dollars to do that.
So it sounds like we have some more work to do, I guess.
Yep.
Okay.
And at the same time, I, I'm gonna meet with the engineer on the rec field, I want to, the layout that he gave us was just kind of a parking lot with some lines in it, we're not paving it, it's a dirt parking lot. I want to go over it with him and show him exactly what I think we should do. And the only reason I, I'm gonna do that is I built parking lot to do this stuff all the time, so I am gonna ask him to do a, a wetland delineation, okay, and a survey. We, we're gonna need the survey anyways because we got the state, we're talking about...
Route one oh nine project.
The Route one oh nine project, so we really ought to have the survey done anyways, that way we know where we stand with them. But I really want to know what, what we can maximize on area up there.
Yeah.
So, so maybe we can kind of do it all at once. Okay, done with that?
Mooring ordinance.
You got, you all set? You good?
Yeah.
Yeah. Morn ordinance, morn ordinance.
Okay. At our last meeting, we had a brief discussion about the notion of considering a mooring ordinance in town. There are very few towns in Maine that have them, but a number of them, according to a document from the state, a number of towns are looking into it. And personally, I think that as a, as a property owner on a lake, I think this would be a good thing for the town to do, given the number of, of lakefront homes we have in the town. And at this stage, I think we need to just get flushed out by legal counsel in terms of what the, the range of possibilities might be for us to consider in an ordinance. What, what's the, the scope of what can be considered legally in an ordinance? We have some information from Department of Agriculture, and they have a Q and A here with a rather thick document, I've looked through it. Quite frankly, it seems to suggest that things that I personally would be interested in are very doable. I've talked to a few people on the lakes and they, you know, they would love to see something like this done. So I would like to recommend that we put this question to legal counsel and ask them to, to outline for us what the range of possibilities are for us to consider in drafting a mooring, mooring ordinance for the town.
I looked it over and I think it makes sense, I think it doesn't hurt to, to put it to legal counsel and see where we can go with it.
Well, we've had, we've had issues in the past where we didn't know what to do with that situation, number Wilson Lake.
Exactly, yeah.
Both of them were on Wilson. But...
One of them I know was, yeah.
But, yeah, yeah, two of them that I know were on Wilson Lake, and, you know, we didn't really have a real understanding, we didn't know what to do with it, so with something like this here, we really thought it was a standalone.
Okay.
Got it.
There you go.
New business, Mark Roy.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Have a good process.
Great to have you with us.
Thanks.
Well, we're, as you heard a little earlier, we're already beginning to talk about our budget process.
Right.
And calendar. I think the, the, the calendar that I've seen play out over the last couple of years, it really runs right up to the date, the final date, and I'm not sure that I would say anyone has been particularly satisfied with the process. And so there's an opportunity now with the services that you'll be bringing to the table and the expertise to consider whether or not, how you might approach developing a budget for the town, assisting us in developing a, a budget for the town. Take a fresh look at the calendar, consider the opportunity to maybe integrate it with the school, and I think also the extent to which you have experience in working with Board of Selectmen, Warrant and Finance Committee, department heads. Help us craft something that would address what I've heard as issues and concerns that have been expressed over the years. And this is a great time to, you know, just kind of start anew. And let's see if we can't put a process in place that will satisfy everyone's needs and in the process hopefully develop a budget that is transparent, accurate, and can get approved by the, by the residents. So with that, I'll, Mark, if you could, maybe describe some of the aspects of that from your perspective.
I don't have a copy yet, you don't either?
It doesn't bite.
So, in general, the process that has, in my experience, worked best is knowing exactly when your town meeting date is gonna be and then working backwards to figure out, okay, well, when, you know, what's the timeframe that we need our budget committee and select board to consider the budget and vote on it, and then how long is that gonna be, and then therefore that tells us when, you know, the department heads and the town administrator and the select board put together their, the initial budget. So, you know, just hearing about March nineteenth, that's a, you know, that's a relatively tight schedule, it's not impossible. But it would mean that, as far as I'm concerned, it would mean that your department heads would probably want to start taking, putting together their budgets, you know, right after Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Give them a couple of weeks to get the, get their initial numbers in. Then generally what has happened is I'll get, you know, because this, this is obviously an Excel workbook, right, with several...
Would you give them a paper copy?
No, no, I'd give, each can have, you know, an Excel copy, you're right, it doesn't really matter.
Whatever they prefer working with.
That's correct, I mean, if they want to scratch, scratch in the numbers, that's fine. Basically, at the end of the day, what needs to happen is I need to get all of the department's budgets in. I'll, you know, make sure it's all cleaned up, it looks good. If there's anything that is, you know, seems kind of wonky, that's when I usually talk to, you know, in, in my case, I've always dealt with town managers. So I usually talk with the town manager, say, all right, does this make sense?
Would you be looking at historical trends when you do that?
No, not, not really, and the reason why is because if you go back beyond, you know, two years...
No, I'm, I'm just saying, going back the prior year, for, for instance, the last two years, we've had a surplus.
Oh, yeah.
And there's a belief that it's probably was larger than it should be.
Right.
And so there's, there's something in that budget that doesn't, isn't accurately capturing...
Yeah.
Reality, and we need to figure out what that is and how to address that.
Right, that is easier to do after you've got a consistent process for a couple of years, right?
Yeah.
Trying to do that with prior year budgets, I mean, even now, right, I mean, I put together the draft today.
Yeah.
I couldn't put in FY twenty-three data yet because I have to translate the data from the old system to the new departments and the new numbers and, you know, working with just, let's say, Warren articles where Warren articles don't necessarily align exactly where, you know, to me, in my, in my thinking, the most transparent budget says, okay, well, when we're gonna have annual financial statements that are prepared and audited, part of those financial statements have a budgetary comparison schedule, and they say, okay, general government, this is what was budgeted, this is what was expended, this is the variance, right? And so a taxpayer should be able to see those audited financial statements and say, yeah, I remember voting on that, or I can even pull up the Warren article and I can see the numbers, tie those numbers directly, here's what the exact number is. So what, the way that the chart of accounts is now formatted, what I did was I took last year's, you know, or I took this year's budget that was, you know, prepared in last year's numbers, I reformatted it, so that all the numbers are there, it's just now they're in kind of a...
Different categories.
Well, not necessarily different, but more consistent categories, right?
Okay, all right.
And object codes.
Oh, I see.
So that when people are actually doing the budget first, they can understand, what are we talking about here? Does it, what does it incorporate, what does it not incorporate, that type of thing? Because I've looked at your Warren articles and, like, for me, to develop this budget in order to like get it translated, it was like going through, all right, I guess, I guess that's gonna go over here, as opposed to normally, I'm just like, oh, well,
That's the budget.
General administration, that's that budget, there I go. You know, fire department, that's that budget, public works, that's that budget, you know? You guys have a lot of public works, individual departments, which I, I didn't, obviously, when I was crafting the, the current chart of accounts, you know, I've tried to avoid making too many changes because that's just, that's, you know, a step too far, right? So I try to make it as familiar as possible while still using... Um, so I try to make it as familiar as possible while still using a, a tried and true kind of, um, scheme, right? A, a coding scheme that.
Let me ask you something, Mark. Uh, what do you think a reasonable budget variance is that a town should target? And feel if it's within this particular.
Yeah.
Threshold, okay, that's, that's a reasonable margin of error in a budget.
That's, that's something that's really difficult to say.
Well, I mean, should it be ten? Should it be ten percent?
Uh, well, it depends on, it depends on the circumstances that happened in that particular year for that particular, um, for that particular department. However, in general, which is what I think you were getting at as far as like a, uh, historical, um, you know, trend. Say, okay, well, every year we budget for district on roads, X amount of dollars, and every year we come in under budget by fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, you know, percent. Well, then that, that's, that is an indication that, okay, well, how do we want to address that? Right? Uh, and there are two ways of addressing that. Because if you're raising, if, if you're constantly coming in under budget, the net effect is to accumulate a surplus, right? Accumulate a surplus, meaning you're taxing people and then just sitting on their taxes, tax money, without having any plan for it. Um, there are two strategies for dealing with that. You, the first obvious strategy is to say, well, hey, let's tighten up that budget, right? We'll, we'll reduce the appropriations that are authorized for that particular department and get it closer to what we think should be, uh, should be actual. That's fine to do. However, the risk that comes with doing that is that you don't have sufficient appropriations in the situation when something out of the ordinary happens, right? So a workaround strategy is to say, well, we're gonna authorize X amount of appropriations. You can spend X amount of dollars, but we're then on the back end going to say, how much do we want to reduce the tax levy by in order to, um, in order to, uh, arrive at the final tax levy amount? Meaning, we have all of these appropriations, general gov-, uh, general administration, municipal management, X, right? And that gets us to ten million dollars, let's say. Well, are we gonna raise ten million dollars? Well, no, because, uh, we, based off of our experience, we're probably not gonna spend ten million. So we're gonna actually budget a deficit. And when I mean a deficit, I'm talking about the amounts that you're raising in non-tax rev-, uh, the amounts that you're generating in non-tax revenues and raising in taxes is not ten million dollars. It's less than that.
Okay.
And so you simply play with that budgeted use of fund balance number to make sure that you're not raising taxes so that you're not accumulating a surplus. You're actually realizing a deficit.
So, um, what that does for you, I guess, is it, um, it creates a little more flexibility.
It does.
On the expense budget for unforeseen events.
Correct.
That would, uh, uh, prevent you from having to go back and ask for some.
Correct.
You know, from a special town meeting.
Right.
Appropriation, cause the.
I mean, roads obviously.
Summer maintenance budget went over.
Right. Roads obviously isn't a, a very great example because the roads under state statute has the ability not to have to go to a special town meeting. But let's say municipal management, right, is gonna be over budget. Uh, some towns prefer not to just call special town meetings, you know, budget really tightly and then call special town meetings near the end of the year when they're also having an annual town meeting and to, to say, oh, well, we are gonna be a little bit over budget. Can we draw down from our, uh, accumulated surplus in order to cover, uh, these expenditures which we're gonna, we're going to have to have?
I kinda like what he's saying.
What if you, so, so we'll take roads for instance, okay? So say the roads is, you know, over budgeted by twenty-five percent every year.
Yeah.
Okay. And, you know, in three years, it averages between thirty and twenty-five percent. And we figure, okay, we're gonna cut this budget down.
Yeah.
What if we had a, uh, like a, um, capital improvement emergency fund? Now you, you, you stamp a number on like a fifty grand. Say, say the over, well, they're normally, uh, budgeted in seventy-five thousand dollars. And there, every year, there's always seventy-five thousand left. What if you put together a, uh, emergency fund, seventy-five, and left that for the first year? You'd have that as, and just continue that on. You wouldn't, you wouldn't be retaxing for that budget, right?
No, you wouldn't, unless you wanted to replenish it. So in any particular year that you used it.
Didn't use it, you wouldn't have to replenish it.
But if you did that for each department, had a, a, a fund just for that and got, so that way there we can get down to more tighter budgets. That'd only affect you with one year. After that.
Right.
You just carry on, right?
Yep. And usually in order to build up such a contingency fund or a contingency reserve, um, uh, often if they want, if, if a town wants to get it to a particular amount that is maybe too, too much of a pill to swallow in one year, they usually do build it slowly over a couple of years. They say, all right, well, let's put, you know, fifty thousand to it this year and then fifty thousand next year as opposed to one hundred thousand all, all, all at once. But then once you have it, then, uh, you need to make sure that your annual Warren articles allow the Select Board to draw down from it as needed.
Typically what we do is like, I know one on that one with the fifteen thousand dollars that we have for emergency fund.
Just make that bigger.
What's that?
Couldn't you just effectively make that bigger?
Well, no. So what I, what I, what I would suggest is doing it for each department, have their own emergency fund. Roads have a, a capital improvement emergency fund, Fire Department. And keep that, each one of those have, say, say, will over budget seventy-five thousand every year, okay? I'm just using your will because I looked at you.
David, when you say over budget, you mean they don't spend seventy-five?
Surplus, they have a surplus.
Okay, thank you.
Over budget surplus, everything, right?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Um, so, um, so you get an average of seventy-five thousand a year. So you turn around and say, okay, we're gonna put seventy-five thousand in a reserve capital fund, uh, emergency fund. And each department have that and you staple that one number there. And you continue that every year. You don't have to worry about a fluctuation in your numbers.
I'm, uh, number one, I, I assume that we would want to make sure the selectmen had to authorize the use of those monies. So this, this would not be at the discretion of a department head.
So what I would do is do the same thing as we have during, you know, with our fifteen thousand dollar emergency fund. We have to go to the Finance Committee.
Yeah.
Have them ponder it and then come back to us with a recommendation. Then we're allowed to spend it. That way there, we don't have to worry about special town meetings.
It's all within us.
You know, but at the same time, we can start budgeting closer, you know? So I don't have to over budget worrying about if there's a emergency down the road, we have that fund and each department can take care of it. I think we can do that.
My only comment on that would be, and that's perfectly reasonable, uh, my only comment on that would be, uh, the more, uh, segregated your reserves become, the more, the more, um, the less flexible they are in their use. So if you have ten different departments that each have ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, uh, this department is gonna be over budget by eleven thousand, but you would have, if you only had one reserve, had a hundred thousand. Well, if you only had one reserve that was available for everybody, you wouldn't have to go to special town meeting. In this case, now you do. You see what I'm saying?
I, I, the reason why I, I was coming up with the idea, I'm not, I'm not the county you are. You know, I'm just coming up with ideas here, but by doing it by each department keeps them honest.
Yep.
It, it makes those guys budget harder.
Yep.
You know?
My only reaction is that, um, we wouldn't want departments to think that that's something they can easily get at.
Correct.
And so I, I personally prefer to have one for the town and, and manage it and use it where it's absolutely necessary. Rather than a department thinking, oh, I got a thirty thousand dollar reserve here and so I can ask for this and this and this, and if I go over.
Yeah, but they still have to go to the Finance Committee. And you're gonna go through the whole process. It's not like it's an open checkbook.
Well, that's a detail we can think about later, but I like the approach.
There, there are a lot of.
Personally, I like the approach.
Right. There are a lot of, well, not a lot, but there are several strategies that you can, that you, that the town can take in order to, um, you know, minimize or optimize, I guess, the amount of unassigned surplus that you have at any particular year. I, uh, I'm not a big fan of, of towns and schools depleting that or getting that as, as narrow as possible, uh, because I've seen the effects when that happens, right? Especially when, you know, like I, I know of one, uh, one school department where they had, you know, a million dollars worth of, uh, of, uh, a pipe burst during the cold snap last, last January. A million dollars worth of damages that they had to come up with cash before the, uh, insurance company slow walked the, the reimbursements. And that really put a strain on their cash, uh, cash flow, like, because they couldn't, they didn't have the cash to meet, or they were getting close to not meeting their payroll, because they didn't have a, a significant, a sufficient unassigned fund balance to cover, or they almost didn't, to cover all of those outflows. Um, so part of managing the unassigned fund balance, I get that taxpayers say, well, I don't, you know, if it's unassigned, let's make it as narrow as possible, right? Five percent is what the state statute is for schools, right, or it will be in twenty twenty-five. That to me is pretty narrow. That, that to me is very narrow. The, the, um, MMA, well, actually, I, I think it's the GFOAs, the, the, um, Government Finances Officers Association, their rule of thumb is two months' worth of, of expenditures. That's generally about twelve percent to eighteen percent.
That, that sounds right.
Which is where we generally say that's a good rule of thumb to have. So the larger your, the larger your, um, total budget, the larger you should have for an unassigned, uh, uh, fund balance. But there's also the consideration of how much do you have in capital fu-, capital projects funds, uh, and any of these reserves, because you want to add those into the mix too. I mean, you don't, if you have, if you have a, a reserve of, let's say, you know, a million dollars that it can be used for any, you know, it's an emergency reserve, well then, yeah, then you don't need as large of an unassigned fund balance because you already have that cash reserve available. This is talking about when you're taking into, when you're, uh, taking into account all of the available, uh, resources that the town has at the end of the year to cover not just their operating budget and their capital needs, but also any sort of potential contingencies.
Um, I don't, I don't believe we, I haven't seen this, uh, in our budgets, but, um, this discussion of unaside fund balances, one that's come up quite a bit in the last year. So, you know, getting your thoughts on that and helping us think about what that ought to be and how to explain that to citizens would be helpful. But, um, typically, uh, in a budget, um, you know, you got your revenue budget, your expense budget, but you also need a capital budget. And I don't believe we have one.
You have some, several capital reserve, uh, capital projects.
We have capital reserves, but we don't have.
Right.
We don't have a capital budget.
No, that's correct.
And when capital projects come up.
Yep.
It, it appears that a lot of times we're funding those out of reserves, undesignedated reserves. Is that a fair statement?
I'm trying to follow you. What are you talking about?
I see. Typically, in a budget, you'd have revenue and expense and you'd have provisions to set aside funds in capital reserve accounts for various fire truck, roads, whatever it might be. And, and, and you're systematically putting that money aside each year based on some need assessment. Somebody has said, you know, this is what the roads needs over the next ten years. The, the Fire Department needs over the next ten years. And you're funding that on a regular basis.
Yes.
Uh, and that avoids, you know, going up and down when all of a sudden we gotta repair the H road and it's three million dollars.
Right.
So you, you got money set aside for that.
Right.
Is that a practice that towns do?
Uh, well, a practice that my clients do, yeah, because I help them with it.
So, I, to the best of my knowledge, we aren't doing that in sort of a, a systematic way.
Right.
And so maybe we don't get there this year, but I think that's something we ought to be, begin to talk about. Um, because I think it will help answer the question of why do we have these undesignedated reserves? It may be that we want some of those put into those capital reserves in order to properly fund them so that we, so we don't whip saw the budget and the tax rate all over the place.
So we kinda do that with like the Fire Department with the fire truck and the animals is usually we have a fund.
We have, it's, we've taken three to five years before this last purchase and put X amount in, twenty thousand each year.
Okay, well, maybe it's being done there. I don't know that it is on roads.
I think that's the only one.
No.
We've got the only one.
The Fire Department is the only one that we've done.
But then we went out and borrowed for a fire truck, so we must not have had much in reserves.
We didn't have enough, so.
Yeah, so, so.
And we're not gonna have enough.
So.
So what I, what I have assisted clients with is, uh, developing exactly what you say is a capital budget. And it's a combination of a capital, uh, a capital projects fund and a debt service fund. So what I, uh, I say to the town managers, uh, is go out to your department heads and it's primarily gonna be your police department, Fire Department, Public Works, because they're gonna have the most capital needs, right? Sometimes your rec department is gonna want a playground built or something like that. Um, but, uh, you go out to those three primary and say, look, estimate out twenty years, twenty, twenty-five years, even thirty years.
Yeah.
Um, on what you reasonably think is going to be needed, you know? What roads are gonna be, need to, need to be repaved. And I'm not talking about your normal, you know, repairs over the course of every year, your operating repairs, right? Your.
This would be a major rehab of a road.
Right.
Yeah.
Where you're reconstructing the road or you're really tearing it up and rebuilding it. Um, what are you gonna, what are gonna be your municipal building needs? Uh, you know, major components like roofs, uh, windows, you know, uh, heating systems, that type of thing. Uh, what are you gonna be your vehicle needs, like Fire Department, you know, pumper trucks, all of that? Think far out in advance, uh, and then put, assign an, an, an amount to it. Meaning, assign a year that you think that you're gonna purchase it and also assign a number to it. And yes, as you go further out in time, it's not gonna be as accurate. But the idea is you develop this comprehensive, uh, plan, right? Of, of, here's all of our capital needs. And then every year, as part of the budget process, not only is the department head going, saying, okay, here's our operational budget, then they look at the, they look at the, um, capital improvement plan and they update all the numbers and the dates. Because sometimes they'll say, oh, well, I'll need a pumper truck fifteen years from now. And then, you know, five years in, they're like, mm, I'm actually gonna need that six years down the road. Not, you know, ten years down the road. So you update those. And as you update those, uh, what, what I do is I can, I try to make it so that the amounts being raised in any particular year is as flat as possible. And if you have enough data in the, in the workbook, um, you can actually do that even with all these kind of what you would think would be significant changes from moving stuff in time and also updating the amount and also adding new things where you were like, oh, I didn't even think about that, let, let's add that in. It's gonna be something new five years down the road. Um, you usually can keep it at a, a pretty, pretty steady, um, uh, amount that you're raising. And then that's just a Warren article every year. It's a two-part Warren article, how much do we want to raise and appropriate to the capital improvement reserve, uh, every year? And usually, you want to get that to be either the same amount or something that is just being raised at a steady rate.
Like inflationary increase.
Two percent, three percent every single year, right? Um, and the second part of that Warren article authorizes the Select Board to expend from that, uh, during the year for capital improvement needs as they deem necessary. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that, most of the times it means for the, the stuff that you plan to expend in this coming fiscal year, you're gonna expend. But it also means that, oh, yeah, well, we did have, let, let's say, a, a cruiser, a police cruiser that we were gonna, uh, replace two years from now, that now all of a sudden crapped out and we need to, we need to advance it. That secondary Warren article allows you to basically say, well, we're gonna advance it and we'll expend it this year. And we simply update, we simply update the workbook and then the next, in the next year, uh, the, the amount that we're raising usually isn't affected that much, if, if at all.
Cause you're combining with all the other capital.
Cause you're combining them throughout.
It's a rounding error.
Right. You're combining them throughout time.
Yeah.
And it's such a large number because now you're, you're considering all of your capital needs, uh, to run the town.
So this is a best practice, you think, for towns?
Oh, yeah. It works really well, uh, once you, once you do it and if you, if you maintain it, uh, on a regular basis. What happens, uh, the criticism though, uh, is that you end up in some years having a very large capital improvement balance. Because you, you know, you're building up because you're gonna have a pumper truck that's coming out. You know, it's gonna be a million dollars or seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars twenty years from now. So you're really kind of building up for these large expenditures. Uh, the, the actual cash outflows in any one year can go up and down, up and down, up and down. But as far as the taxpayer is concerned, their cash outflow is a nice steady increase or a nice flat line if you really wanted it. I don't recommend that, but a nice, like, two percent, three percent increase every year.
Really, at the end of the day, you're taking money out of the general surplus, put in a reserve to kind of camouflage as a general surplus.
Well, yes, that's exactly, but the difference.
It's to make it more transparent.
But the difference is, the, the difference is, an unassigned fund balance is exactly that. It's unassigned, it's unappropriated by the townspeople for expenditure. When you start, when you assign it for particular expenditures, well, then that, then you are intentional with what you're, what you're doing. And it's, it's more of an argument against, well, you're not, you're just raising money to sit on. No, we're raising money because we're gonna need to repair that road ten years from now. Or we're gonna need to have a fire truck, or we're gonna need to have a new plow truck.
So I guess the question I have is, by setting it up like that, does that give the Selectmen the authority to use that during the year?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, that's too far, too far Warren article.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, you should always have, you should always have Warren articles that author, every single year. Even though, um, I believe, not, I'm not. that author, every single year, even though I believe, not, I'm not a lawyer, but, but I believe in state statute, the reserves, that you guys are the trustees of the reserves. And so, I think under state statute, you can go ahead and expend from those reserves as trustees.
Depending on how they.
Without the, without a warrant article. But I, I'm like, look, you might as be, might as well be as very explicit as possible so that you always have something that you can rely on. And you should do it every single year. Meaning, it should be a recurring article that every towns person gets used to seeing. Well, that's the amount we raised, that's their, the authority for them to expend from it.
Can I ask you a question?
Um, yeah, come on up, Charlie. I didn't show up again to that part of it yet, but we're ahead.
Well, I don't know what your plan is. I, I just, I really like what Tom was saying and what Mark?
Mark.
Mark was saying. I'm familiar with that in other towns and it's, it's, it's a way to do it. I would just like to plant the seed of, when you're developing this, to base a lot of these reserves on life cycle cost, either maintenance or replacement cost. Because you know you have a certain life cycle on a piece of apparatus, fire department apparatus. You have a certain life cycle on windows, roads. They have a certain expected life cycle. So, that's how you can develop part of the budget. So, you can develop this reserve for that and it will fluctuate.
Right.
But it's a way to smooth out big increases for a town.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think right now what we're doing, so we don't have our big increases, we're just pulling money out and then doesn't need a fund to offset it.
That's right.
That's how we're working.
Right. And, and, you know, if, if you haven't been able to really manage your unassigned fund balance well, because it's hard to nail down what it is at any particular time.
What's it for?
Right. Well, well, not only that, you, you may have been just lucky that you had the, the money in there, right? You see, you really want to be much more, you know, focused on, okay, well, this is what we're going to have for an unassigned fund balance. This is what we're going to have for a capital improvement project, reserve fund or capital projects fund. The, the tool that I developed for my clients, I also combine how it gets financed. So, as I said earlier, it can either be a capital projects fund where you're raising cash and saving it and setting aside. But then there are some extremely large expenditures where you might, where, if you were to say, well, we're going to save up and purchase it out of hand, well, that amount is going to be significant. Or do you want to finance it and then what's your?
And then fund the debt service.
And then, yeah, but then what I do is, right, you, you basically incorporate all of that into how much you're raising. I'm not a big fan personally of financing.
Neither am I.
It was when it was, it was, it was all right when the interest rate was zero.
Yeah, it was 2%, it was great, yeah.
Right, you know?
Yeah.
But now, interest rates are really high. It seems to me that's just an extra cost for no reason.
Well, the town has no debt.
Right.
And other than the fire truck, it probably hasn't any debt for a while.
Well, we get the fire truck also, I don't think we have any debt.
No, but prior to that, have we had much debt?
No, very little.
We, we, we've taken loans.
But short, are they short-term?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've taken loans to pay bills before.
Yeah, okay, but, yeah.
Years ago, long time.
Long time ago.
But generally, my sense is there's a, there's a sentiment that we would prefer not to have debt. Is that a fair statement?
I, I recommended, when we bought the fire truck, to take a loan on it because we didn't have all the money.
Yeah.
At the time, it was pretty cheap money.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It was their money.
Yeah.
And, and we didn't have to worry about, because what, what I was trying to do is keep the tax rate the same. So, by taking the loan, it spread that out over a period of time. So, you didn't have, you know, $450,000 impact in one year. We spread it on four, so it didn't make that big impact. But, I mean, obviously now we've got a lot more money to work with. We're in a different situation now. But it costs the interest rates a lot, so it's a lot of, I don't mind taking it if it's free, well, low interest rate, we use their money. That's what business people do every day. They don't use their money, use somebody else's.
Um, we've also been talking about how to, the thought is to team a liaison from the board with the department head, with the liaison that's been assigned by the warrant and finance committee. They've done that to departments. And kind of pull them together as a, as a working group to develop that budget so that those individuals can then facilitate the discussions of the budget when it comes time to review the fire department and, and so on, and hopefully speed along the process so that we, we have members of the select board and the warrant and finance committee actually taking a more active role in developing that budget. Is that a, does that sound reasonable to you? Or not a good idea, or do you have a better one?
Well, it, it sounds like it might slow things down as opposed to speed things up. It would seem to me that a department head developing their own initial budget first and then.
Yeah, yeah.
And then saying, okay, let's, you know, fine tune this is a bit, is a bit faster and more flexible than trying to schedule, all right, well, I got to get these three people in the room together at the same time for all these different departments and what, what's this budget going to be? I, I can see that that would, that would probably delay things.
Okay.
Probably not, not be as fast. But I, I get the, I get the concept. But that's why I would think that you would say, or the, the normal progression is, you know, you have an initial budget that gets kind of fine tuned by the town manager, in the, in the case of a town manager style government. That gets fine tuned by the town manager and then that goes off to the select board or the budget committee. They spend a couple, you know, a couple meetings or three, four, five meetings going over everything, having the department heads come in and explain, hey, why is, what are the significant variances? Not every single line, because that's, that's ridiculous. But, you know, significant variances in, in one year to the next. And then you also take a look at actuals because just comparing budget to budget doesn't really make much sense, right? You budgeted wrong last year, okay, well, I had a, you know, a 2% increase on my budget, I'm doing really good. Well, no, you budgeted wrong last year. Let's take a look at actuals. So, you kind of look at all, you, you look at, you know, in this case, what has been, you know, useful is what was the prior fiscal year's actuals? Where are we year-to-date this year that we can quickly annualize it if we wanted to? And then what was last year's budget? And you look at all three to kind of get an idea of what's an appropriate budget. And that's where you ask the department heads, okay, well, for these different items, why are there, what's the, what's the reason for the significant changes from one year to the next? For what you want to budget compared to what you had for actuals or what you had for budget last year? Or what you're trending this year? With the idea at the select board level or the budget committee level, you're not really trying to, you know, dilly-dally about, you know, a hundred bucks here and a hundred bucks there. That's, that's the department head's job to figure, okay, what do I generally need? Because you're talking about, you know, an $8 million, $10 million budget. All right, who cares about a hundred bucks here or there, right? You should, as you, as you go along the progress, process, you should be coming back, you know, to a 3,000, 30,000 foot level going, okay, let's take a look at this as a department because that's all that really matters when it comes to budget to actual appropriation. What does the warrant article authorize for the department? Because that's all we're going to compare with. We don't care if you, you know, budgeted $1,500 for supplies and $600 for salaries. As long as you come in under $7,500 bucks, you're good, right? Next year, try to be a little bit more accurate in the individual cost, cost items. But from a select board member, a viewpoint, or even a budget committee viewpoint, you're only looking at significant variances and trying to say.
Is that the way you typically see it operated in towns?
Oh, yeah. Well, the towns that I, that I advise, and also, I served as a commissioner for Andes Coggin County once, well, for one stint. And the first time we were going through the budget, they were going through every single line. And I'm like, are you serious? We're going to do this? I mean, it's six o'clock at night where they started and we're talking about, I'm like, I'm not sitting here for, for 10 hours to go through and figure out whether or not we're going to increase this by 50, but this is an $11 million budget! I'm not doing that! So, they were like, what, we don't have to do that? No, you don't have to do that. All that matters is at a departmental level, or in the case of, in the case of a town, what the warrant article authorization amount is, right? The, shall the town raise and appropriate, you know, $100,000 for municipal management? Okay, it doesn't really matter what you're, how you're spending that money. That $100,000 is all that we really care about. The, the, throughout the year, it's, it's incumbent upon the department head to manage their budget and think about, well, yeah, jeez, I should have really kind of budgeted for, you know, something I didn't think about. And then I'll include that next year, which is why you want to have the details. But that's really for the department head to really, you know, as a kind of a checklist to jog their memory. Oh, yeah, I got to remember, I got to, I got to budget for other contracted services, equipment repairs. I didn't think about dues and subscriptions. Let me, let me add in that. You obviously don't want your department head to just have one big figure. You want them to actually think about the details.
So, yeah, so, you know, you've got contracted services, all that. By having your number plugged in there, that's going to tell them the next year, okay, I went over on that number.
Right.
I've been saying this right along.
Right.
Back when I was road commissioner and we did it kind of this way. It was pretty much a bottom number. We, I always ran by the bottom number.
Yeah.
But when I got done, we decided we were going to itemize this, itemize that. We made, it made everything difficult. Way, way it should be done, like you're talking about.
Yeah.
Bottom number, the department head should be taking, you know, put, obviously, put a number in there and open it, you know, because the next year, he can adjust that number by every.
After salaries.
After salaries and everything, you know, well, that's it. It's the salary stuff that, you know, for like a road commissioner to put it, it's almost impossible to get that.
Right, but the other departments, we don't want it to come across that, I mean, the salaries are still approved by the select board. We don't want the thing that they can spend the rest of that line.
So, we don't, in developing that budget, we really don't want department heads focusing on salaries.
Okay.
I, I would say, because those are set, unless you're going to add or take away a position, basically, everyone's going to get an annual increase. And so, that's math.
Yep.
There's nothing specific there that a department head can add to it. So, you ought to be running the math and the spreadsheets and it just is what it is.
And that's how it usually happens.
Yeah.
Especially when you have unions, right, where you have contracted amounts anyway.
Yeah.
So, usually, the department heads are looking at non-payroll expenditures and they're budgeting for that.
That makes sense.
And then we plug in, we do a calculation, plug in, okay, well, this is what your salaries and benefits are going to be. And then, but then that's, that's still a total departmental budget, right?
Yeah, well, what I was getting to was like, when we redid ours, remember, we put the gravel and every culverts and separated everything we had. It's this long. And, you know.
Yeah.
All you do is Robin Peters, the paint Paul anyways.
You know, that.
None of it made sense.
That may be helpful for a department head who wants to, they may want to keep track of that.
Yeah.
But we don't need to worry about that. As long as they're doing their job, if that helps them figure out, you know, they want to make sure they got money for all those things they got to do. Having that detail at an object code level may be helpful for them.
Well, it is. And there are oftentimes, especially with new clients, where, you know, the, because they've been told, hey, you can't go over this budget line for this particular expense. They, they, you know, are trying to, you know, shoehorn in expenditures in something that, that's not really, that's not a supply system, that's electricity. Just code it to electricity. But I'm going to be over electricity.
So, what?
It doesn't matter. Actually, it's better that you code it correctly.
Correctly, yeah.
Because then, when you're using it, when you're looking at actuals next year, when you're developing your budget, you can make a more accurate budget. They get very nervous, well, I don't want to be over budget. I didn't have, I didn't have a, a X amount in, in paving and so now I'm going to put, you know, paving, you know, this paving expenditure as whatever, telephones. No, no, don't do that.
A lot of the times, it's like, you know, when the budget's given to the finance committee and you see red with a minus on it, everybody gets nervous. It's the bottom number.
Yeah. Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, it's up to the department head as far as how they get to it. And that's the breakdown for the, for the department head, yeah.
And like I said, you know, the budgetary process gets better if you're consistent and, you know, have a logical way of maintaining it from one year to the next. If, if it changes from one year to the next, right? And then you, you can't really make the comparisons and it's not as useful. So, once you get a good process that is logical, it's, it's much easier to maintain and it also becomes more useful in the future. Which is why I was saying, trying to do a trend analysis, you know, based off of the last several years. I don't know, I don't know. It's going to be a lot of work for, I don't know how much value. But.
So, so Jennifer, you have started to pull together a calendar?
We have, well, we're looking for the date, the town, town meeting date. And we started, we started talking, you know, just briefly at 5:00. And what, how much time we thought we needed for the department head. And, you know, we were going to, I was going to go over it with Mark over the next couple of days. But what I heard tonight is that we're going to reach back out to the school first and see if we can find another date, maybe closer to April, and then go backwards from there. I mean, I, I agree with Mark. I mean, I think it can be tight, but if we needed to make the March 19th, I think we could. But it's going to be, you know, giving the department heads about two, two and a half weeks.
Well, a March 19th date means you have to have it, the warrants approved by when?
Well, I mean, they have to be posted legally for seven days. You've got to go backwards to school, warrant and finance recommendations, board of selectmen recommendations. So, I mean, we'd have to, we want them exactly.
I mean, so.
I mean, we'd want to have everything completely done by the, you know, by the first of, first of March.
First of March, which is tight, which is tight. It's not impossible, but tight.
No, because if you had all your budgets in from your department.
You don't need to do it that.
Bots isn't working.
No, 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 no.
I've seen two feet of snow in bots.
I'm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Historically, it's been.
We have a vote, you can't just cancel the vote because of a snowstorm.
Right.
So, you know, if we look at what the school has been doing for three, four years now.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
End of April.
You know, I, I, you know, I, we contact the, um, school and see, you know, if we can get a happy meeting, you know, see if we can.
Why don't we try to pick a date today that we think might work, so that we can go back and talk to the school about it, would that be all right?
So, the school vacation is the week of April fifteenth, does that sound right, and with kids?
It's one week, one way or the other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You go by it.
Yeah, yeah, give them a date to go by, and then we can begin to have that discussion, hopefully, we get everyone on the same page, so, um.
I hope, I'd say April twenty-third.
April twenty-third.
Assuming that's not vaca- in the vacation, the week is the week before, um.
Why don't we do the first week of May?
I think that you may have a better chance of.
You think April?
Yes, I don't think they wanna push it off.
Yeah, I think April.
There's always a chance.
Well, I thought there was an issue where they might, Dan, you said something about during, during the meeting, that they were worried about people coming off vacation and not being.
Well, that was one of the things that was brought up, that they had to really push to advertise the meeting last year, because they're coming off of vacation. That's why Mr. Ross and other people are out there with the signs.
Why don't we just put out the twenty-third, and if they have those concerns, let them come back and, you know, suggest an alternative date that will address whatever there is, issues around the vacation.
First week, that would give them time to do what they were talking about.
Yeah, 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 no, and, and we may end up, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so the week, the vacation is the, the, um, week of the fifteenth, so.
So, the twenty-third is what day, is that a?
Well, Tuesday, that's normally the day.
A Tuesday.
After that vacation.
Vacation.
Yeah, well, we'll see, we'll.
I mean, you could do the Tuesday before.
Well, wait a minute, if it was gonna be a town meeting, it wouldn't be on a Tuesday, would it?
I mean, it can be any day you want.
But wouldn't you wanna do it on a weekend?
School is, school is typically during the week.
They've done, typically done during the week, their open town meetings have always been during the week. Special town meetings have normally been, special town meetings are on, during the week, it's only our annual that's been on Saturday.
Well, I, I would think more people would be available to attend a town meeting on the weekend than a weekday. I, I, I don't understand why you would do it on a work, weekday. Now, and, and all due respect, they may have good reasons for that.
They have, they have their, their, they don't have their own, you don't have one, but they do, there's a ballot anyway.
They're not anymore, though, they're, yeah.
They only allow that because of COVID?
They have to.
But they have to go back to.
So, why don't we pick a weekend?
Saturday, the thirteenth.
Saturday.
So, Saturday, the thirteenth is going into vacation, the twentieth is coming out of vacation, so they may have a concern with either one of them.
Well, maybe it's the twenty-seventh.
Okay, or the sixth.
Or the sixth. Yeah.
Yeah, it's gotta be on Saturday.
Saturday.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's gonna be longer with both.
Yeah, well, let's try to condense this stuff down and, you know, uh, get the minutia out of it.
Let's reach out to the superintendent, we'll send an email, and then I'll work with Mark to get the timeline going backwards.
Great.
And we'll go from there.
Father's Day, is that what you?
That's a good, we're in a good start.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
I, I, do you wanna open up, any comments, or?
Yeah. Anybody, any questions to Mark here? Joyce?
Um, Joyce Spachy, formerly capital improvement, and I sug- I suggested we suspend this year, because we were collecting a lot of data. But that was not really going forward for a multiple of reasons, not because of roadblocks or any negative kinda thing. Um, in fact, it was kinda fun to do it. First year we did it, we had a, um, I'll never forget this one, because it's a David one, the fire department. And, um, we talked to the chief, and we said, tell us what you need. And I don't like the term wishlist, although it colloquialism, it's a wait, wishlist. And the chief at the time gave me a thing that went out to twenty fifty. Well, wanna watch me spend fifty million dollars very quickly? You know, I mean, and you almost fell off your chair when, when I read that to you, twenty fifty, what? But from last year, what we had last year, right now, I can tell you by twenty twenty-seven, they're talking about, uh, another new truck, probably an engine this time, I believe. I think Ed would know if that's what, and, uh, ambulance, they need a new bus, and everything that goes in it. So, I think for the budget, to get the, that particular portion in there, that's gonna have a nice, steady climb up. So that, you know, when we have, because there's not gonna be another four hundred thousand dollar fire truck of any kind anymore. That, I don't think they exist anymore. I mean, look at the difference at the grocery store four years ago to today. I mean, housing stopped because lumber cost went up in the last four years, so it's all gonna change. And I think that hits our budget a lot.
Yeah.
Uh, so that we have that to go up, and I think, um, I, I'm very excited to hear that part of it, because I think it fits into the budget. Um, I, I'm rather shocked to hear, don't, don't worry about your individual lines, because a couple of us from Warren Finance just looked at each other, and I forget exactly what he said, but it was someone like, thank you, God. You know, look at that bottom line and get it done, you know, and get it done, that, that would be great. But the biggest thing, and it's what I heard at Warren Finance and cap improvement, is there's a difference between maintenance and big improvements. I don't wanna call them, because I think maintenance is one thing, but capital, I forget the word.
Capital acquisitions, capital purchases, capital.
Well, not, not necessarily, but big things. You know, a sinkhole takes this building away, we need a new building, that's a big capital expenditure that we need to do.
Capital emergency fund.
Typically, an organization will set a policy, and they'll say, a capital item is X dollars or more.
Right.
And that might be ten thousand, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand.
But that's.
So then, everything else is maintenance, and it's in the operating.
Right, because that, to me, makes the biggest difference with the budget, and if we hold the budget, we hold the taxes. We hold it, and I think it sounds, as a citizen, I can't speak, as a former capital improvement chairman, I can, because that's former, I think it sounds great.
Great.
Thanks.
Hi, Susan, so, um, my question is this, were you folks planning on doing an across-the-board raise this year?
Well, we haven't discussed it yet.
Well, what we gotta do first is we gotta, we gotta get the budgets in from the departments, see what, you know, make sure there's not any large, humongous, giant inflated numbers. And then, you know, obviously, we can't make a recommendation on the raises until we see what those numbers are gonna be. Obviously, if those numbers come in stupid huge, you know, we can't give big raises.
Well, the reason why I ask is, I personally have never worked in government, I've always worked in private sector, but it's always merit, based on merit. You don't just give across-the-board raises. You, so I guess it would require, um, interviews or whatever, um, and then you decide what size raise the person would get. The other thing that I would like to see is the departments have their budget, you know, X amount of dollars. But I would like to see a separate line for the salaries, raises, that type of thing. Because it's hard to see that as a taxpayer. All you're seeing is, say, the fire department or general government, X amount of dollars, and you can't really see what all that money is.
Well, see, that's one reason why we don't do it there, because you take the fire department, for instance, okay, how many, uh, per diems do we have?
A bunch.
A bunch, okay, and they change, and they change, and when we hire these per diems, we would have to interview each one every time, because, you know, they work for every different town around. We set a rate form, and we give a percentage every year to keep up with, you know, the local towns are doing the same thing.
Susan, if I understand what you're saying.
But I think merit is something that should be part of.
You can't do merit, we, like, like I was saying, the per diems, we have, say, I'd say we must have twenty-five, thirty of them, okay? Um, they're, they're like subcontract, they're like subcontractor help kinda, but we, we have to pay the benefits.
You'd separate that out, could you separate?
You're gonna separate thirty people, then the rest of them, you're gonna do that too, I mean.
Su- Susan, I've, I've worked in both a merit system and sort of across-the-board inflationary and system. And when your, your compensation budget's growing by three percent or two percent, it's very hard to distinguish and create funds that can provide meaningful merit. Because everybody's dealing with inflation, and so you wanna make sure, you know, it's hard not to wanna, uh, provide inflationary dollars for everyone. And at three percent, you can only slice that pie so thin. If you got, like we did a year ago, if you got like a eight percent salary increase, yeah, you can do that. But, um, I don't know, I think.
And then I think.
I think social security, which is a measure of inflation, just went up three percent, so I don't think we're looking at another.
But we don't get the full three percent, keep that in mind, uh, because they always raise our health and.
No, I, I'm just.
We just use that as a, something to look at.
As a proxy for, for inflation. We would look at CPI, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, the, the, the high inflation, at least for this coming budget cycle, as I understand inflation, it's more in the threes. And so, there's not gonna be a lot of opportunity to take that three percent pool and split it up with saying, so much is across-the-board, what's that, like, one and a half percent? And put another one and a half into merit, I, 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 to me, that doesn't work.
But we've done it, we've done.
Could we still have a separate line with each department, so we see how much is going towards salaries?
Oh, I'm sure you.
Well, we have the budget breakdown, we have a spreadsheet that we provide as documentation, but what happens is on the Warren article, they combine them, and they like to see them separately.
Right, so at the meeting, nobody, all they see is.
All they have to do is look at the budget, the attachment.
General government, I'm thinking of that, because you're all here, X amount of dollars. And you don't know how much of that is salary, you don't know how much of that is the increase for the health insurance, which goes up every year.
For our other, for our other clients, we basically provide this as a, as a booklet that.
As do we every year.
That townspeople have when they're making the Warren, when they're making, and it ties directly to the Warren article, so when they're voting on, you know, Warren articles, shall we raise, you know, whatever, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars for district, district one roads? The townspeople are looking, that's the Warren article authorization, the townspeople are, have a booklet that are looking at all the details, and they can go.
I, I, I think what Susan, I think what Susan is, is experiencing, if somebody just walks in and hasn't looked at any material beforehand, and they've got a warrant in front of them, they, there's no detail behind it.
No, that's true.
If you haven't been to the meeting.
And what you're asking for is, I, I think, tell me how much the salary, you know, there's a, there's a growth in the town's budget from four million to four point three million.
Yeah.
What's that three hundred thousand dollars for? How much of it was salaries, how much of it was X, Y, and Z? And you're looking for some detail, I get it.
Are you, do you want the breakdown for salary, or do you wanna break down the actual?
Well, I'm not saying.
The actual person.
I'm not saying each person, but, I mean, typically, we don't see.
She wants to see the Warren article broken down, I'm sorry, Susan, I know exactly what you're saying, because she tells us every year at town meeting.
I do.
She wants to see town administrator X amount, code officer X amount, treasurer X amount. We did that for many years, and then, Tom, we combined it last year, remember, into one general government.
Ah.
She wants it to go back to each individual person, correct if I'm wrong.
Which you can find in the.
Or either the, each individual department.
Yep, which we.
And I want it, you know, so, just to keep the men, numbers straight, I'm sure your budget's more, million dollars and four hundred thousand, which is for salaries.
So.
You see what I mean?
Yeah, I understand, I don't know, we'll, we'll have to discuss that a little bit more, but one thing I wanted, I do wanna explain that we do do, because we don't just give a three percent raise across the board. I think we gave five percent la- uh, what was last year's?
Eight percent, another year.
But what we've done in the last couple of years is, what we're doing now, you know, say, town clerk, or, or, or people in, in town hall, code officer, we're, we're looking at now, a whole area, we're looking at all the wages, what people are paying. Okay, because what, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to stay competitive. Now, we, we, because we don't wanna lose them to other towns, and so what we've done with, uh, with employees here, as we've seen those increases be, in numbers, where we didn't give them a, the, the three percent or a five percent, we actually had to boost them up to a certain amount. We've done some merit, okay, I would say, I, I don't like calling it merit.
It's not merit.
Okay, yeah, it's not merit.
No, it's.
Okay, but.
It's market.
It, it's market, you're right, okay? We've had to do that, so, but overall, all the positions in the town of Acton, transfer station, um, in here, in the office.
Look where we get from the fire department.
The fire department, we did the same thing, okay?
Yeah.
Last year, we did a two dollar and fifty cent raise, year before, we did a two dollar and fifty cent raise to get to that point. So what we're doing is, we're keeping track of all the wages in the area, stay competitive. We use the three percent or the four percent as a, you know, as kind of our go-to, and then we, we, we make sure everybody else, everybody's being compensated correctly, and we make those adjustments.
So, and I understand that you do have to stay competitive, you can't be paying, you know, minimum wage, and everybody else is paying minimum wage plus five dollars, or whatever it works out to be. But I would like to see a second line, so we could.
They're writing the town book?
But I will agree that, that, that I think you put together is clearer and easier to understand than our typical that we would have.
I gotta tell you, I, I got a report from Mark today, that was as of October, I think it just went out to the Warren Finance Committee as well, didn't it?
Yes, it did.
And I, I was able to look at it, and about ten minutes, I could look and say, yeah, everything's fine.
Right.
Very concise, clear.
But you have to admit, the year before.
I'm, I'm talking about what we're doing now.
Yeah, exactly.
What we're doing now is, we got a very.
I do like that.
Well-organized, accurate, easy-to-read set of statements, so hopefully, you find them the same way.
Right, I mean, because previously, it was very hard.
Well, I, I, okay.
So I do like what you wrote up.
Yeah.
It does make it easier, so that's all I'm asking for. We, our taxpayers, we pay all the bills, I just wanna see it, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Phil?
Oh, do, oh, I didn't see ya.
I snuck up on you, hi, everybody. Uh, thi- this is in reference to the investment policy, and, and what made me think of it again is on October twenty-third, at the Warren Finance Committee, I wasn't at it, but Joe brought up the question about it to, to Tom. And so, I'm, I got a few, my, this is primarily through questions, um, and I know, I know the policy pretty well, it's pretty straightforward. So what, my first question is, what actual investments do we have now? Is it TD with a brokerage?
We have, we have, uh, money's, um, three million dollars that is invested in treasury bills, um, with a million, uh, with a, uh, basically, a one-month of charity. Two million with a, another million with a two-month, and another million three, and we just roll those over.
Right, is that with a brokerage?
We have not dipped into any of that.
Is, is that with a brokerage, broker, Tom?
It, it is held, uh, in a brokerage account at TD Bank.
Okay.
Okay, uh, we also have, um, and I'm not sure of the exact amount, because we just, we had initially put in, million, a million and a half, into the, a million and a half?
I'm not, Kelly's.
It was either a million and a million and a half, it, it, that we had put into a, um, variable-rate treasury fund. That was, uh, basically gave you daily access to your money, and it was invested in treasury notes that were variable-rate, which meant the, the, the rate got set by the market every week. So, if the, the rates went up, the earnings on the fund went up.
Right.
Rates went down, it went down. Um, we just moved a million and a half into that fund. We had, and made an initial deposit, and I'm sorry, I don't know if it was a million or a million and a half, we took some of that back, because we needed to pay some bills, and we had intended that fund to be used for that purpose. And now, we just put a million and a half back into it, because we had tax receipts, and they were sitting in a bank account that were not earning as much as we could with this, with this, it's a, it's a mutual fund. Wisdom tree, mutual fund, which is currently earning five point four percent, and that's approximately what the treasury bills are earning as well. And then, then we have money sitting with Partners Bank, which is sort of our daily cash fund, and I, I don't know how much is in there right now, um, my guess is, there's probably still over a million dollars there, would be my guess.
One point three.
One point three million, sitting at Partners Bank, and they're giving us a return on all of the partner accounts, because we have multiple accounts, of four point five percent.
And, and my point isn't necessarily what, what the dollar amount is right now, but.
Oh, okay.
But that's good.
I thought that's what you asked, I'm sorry, I went on.
I tried to interrupt you, but I didn't succeed. My, my, my real point I'm getting at is, I'm sure we get statements like, like, uh, personal investors do monthly typically, right?
Yeah.
And I was, I was wondering, are those available on the website?
No.
Can you tell me why not?
But they could be, we just haven't put them out there. I, I was answering your question, they aren't available on the website today.
Okay.
Uh, I, I, I.
This is the first we thought, thought about it.
I don't, hasn't come up, we'll consider it.
Yeah, I, I really.
Personally have a problem with any of it being.
I would really like to see that transparency for everybody, because that's what the website's for, and it's, it's just a matter of scanning something into a PDF and uploading it typically, right?
Sure.
And I, I, I'm sure there might be other people, I, I'd just like to see that, I know, I know how to read them, I know what they mean, but it, as a taxpayer, I'd like to see our investments.
Why don't we, why don't we discuss it at a future agenda item?
Yeah, we'll, we'll put that in Jennifer.
Okay, we'll take it up in our next meeting.
All right, thanks, appreciate it.
So, I don't know, we still got.
We got one more.
Okay, got a question from Mark, right?
Well, as new to the Warren Finance Committee, and to the whole process, I found tonight to be very enlightening, and, um, I like the approach that Mark has laid out. And I look at this from the perspective that you want the department heads to have as much flexibility to do their job and not be micromanaged. And I think that that can be done through an assessment of when you build the budget, you have to have a contingency fund at the department levels, that everyone feels comfortable, provides some flexibility, so that you can tighten up the budgets and have the ability to operate themselves, and manage it, and have oversight by the Board of Selectmen and the town. The next level up is the Board of Selectmen, and this is, where I was going is, you have, you have a smaller contingency by department based upon their budgets, a larger contingency based upon the overall budget, that gives the Board of Selectmen the capability of dealing with unexpected expenditures without having to go back to the whole town for a vote, and I, that format makes all the sense in the world to me. And the, the other thought I had was understanding the roles of the various parties in the directions that the Board of Selectmen give to the department heads. You know, when I've done budgets in my previous life, uh, the executive committee comes out and says, okay, this is, you're gonna build your own budgets, but these are the guidelines under which you build the budgets. And you can develop those budgets based on the guidelines, you can go outside the guidelines, but you know, this is what we're kinda looking at from an overall global perspective. And, um, I had one other point. That went by fast. I'm try, oh, we used to have to put together the assumptions that we built a budget on, and they don't have to be large narrative of, uh, explanations of the numbers. But when we're looking at the budgets, it'd be nice to know, in a very short, concise narrative, exactly what the thought process was behind each of the line items that built the budget up. And I think that that would provide some consistency to the oversight of, of approving budgets, if that was available.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Thanks, Lee.
Okay, anybody else? Nope, okay.
Mark, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Really, uh, done a great job.
Okay. We possess law and care bids.
So, today was the deadline for the law and care bids, have been advertised. We sent it out to numerous locals that we could find, um, in addition, ran it in the newspaper, it's been posted online. And we received two. Uh, the bid itself, remember, was quite detailed, you were looking for. You were looking for a breakdown of three, four, five different locations, possible bushhogging. So if we can open them and have a week to review them, it's going to take some time probably to compare them. See if I can give you a quick rundown. The first one is from Seacoast Property Maintenance, Town Hall Safety Building. He's got it at a hundred and twenty dollars per cut, Rec Field, a hundred and twenty dollars per cut. Nature Preserve and Lincoln School at sixty dollars. The Fire Tower, he's got it fifty dollars a cut. Bushhogging at the transfer station, two hundred and fifty dollars per cut. All prices include fertilizer. Prices, prices on mowing are based on twenty-four cuts total for the season, so fifteen nine sixty, based on those quick numbers.
So he does have a total number there?
Yes.
Okay, good.
But you asked him for a breakdown per event.
Okay, yeah.
It looks like his was.
I was worried that he didn't have a full.
No, no. Fifteen nine sixty. Second one that came in is from, what's the name? Spruce Property Care. Given a description of the property and attached a picture of our property. There we go. And our original bid. Okay, so, let's see. So Blueberry Hill, he's got it sixty-five dollars. The other one was fifty. Orchard Road was Lincoln Schoolhouse. He's got it sixty-five per cut. The other one was.
Really, the end number's what we need, right?
Sixty, yeah, well, he doesn't have one, David.
Doesn't have one.
I'm doing the best I can to add them up. And it doesn't indicate how many mowings it's based on.
It's going to be, it's going to take some work to get these.
Yeah, if you don't want to hear it.
Apples and apples.
Does, does, does that bid have?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. It's highlighted, I'm sorry, David. I couldn't, these are a bunch of references, and I just. Yearly cost with no fertilizer, forty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Yearly cost with fertilizer, seventy-five thousand. And they're, they're.
So you're doing Fenway Park, yeah, really?
Okay.
So let me have a week to compare them. And I'll put the spreadsheet together. Those are the only two.
Those are the only two?
Yeah.
Does that one have the bushhogging?
I think it's irrelevant.
You're in the wrong line of business.
Right off.
I want to get a mower.
The law and care guys got brand-new trucks, all of them do. Could you please give me the number for both of them separately?
Yearly cost, no fertilizer from Spruce Property Maintenance was.
Seven fifty.
Forty-two, seven fifty. Seacoast with fertilizing was fifteen nine sixty. So I guess, I'm sorry, let's go back. Spruce would have been seventy-five thousand with fertilizing, because we're comparing it to Seacoast with fertilizing, fifteen thousand nine sixty.
I wonder what the difference is.
But I don't know how many mows this one's included. It doesn't say specifically, so.
Well, it, it, I don't know. It may depend upon the, on the rain and, you know, how frequently, you know, how quickly the grass is growing, don't you think?
Right, but I'm just curious how we.
You don't think so? No. That's in my house.
Right, but I mean, Seacoast is basing it on twenty-five, you know, twenty-four mows for the year. I got to figure out how many he's basing on.
I just want to go through them.
We'll do that, so next meeting.
We're going to go on to abatements.
Good idea. All right, so we have some abatements. Tax map one eighteen lot twenty-nine Higgins Revocable Trust, their land was adjusted from sixty-foot frontage to fifty-foot frontage, which gave these property owners a two hundred and sixty-two dollar and eighty-one cents abatement. Next is for tax map one forty-seven lot twenty-two Hudson. The land area was adjusted from two hundred and forty-three foot frontage to two hundred foot frontage. That gave them a hundred and thirty-eight dollar and sixty-eight cents abatement. Pair Family Living Trust, tax map one forty-nine lot one, looks like the land value was adjusted to reflect the value if combined with the, by combining with the abutting lot. They received an abatement in the amount of three hundred and thirty-two dollars and John Perkins, tax map one fifty lot two, land is adjusted based on the depth of the property in the amount of eight hundred and fifteen dollars and twelve cents. And then Linda Cronin, tax map two seventeen lot seven, the land was adjusted to reflect the limitations of the parcel. An abatement in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. The last one is for tax map one twenty-five lot twenty-five. It's for Brian Furland, and it is a denial of an application for an abatement. They believe that it is assessed correctly and no abatement is necessary. So they denied that request.
Is there anything to approve there?
We need to approve the denial, because he does have the right to go to New York County Commissioners. That's the next step up.
All right, do we need to?
Is there a motion to approve the abatements as red?
As red, thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the denial, just so we have that on record.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And if it ever, just so, for Dan and Ed, if, well, Ed may know this, but if it ever does go to the next level, which is New York County, part of our assessing contract is that O'Donnell would represent us and go and plead the case on your behalf as the license assessor.
Accept questions? Oh, not yet. We'll get through this here in a second. Are you talking about the abatements here?
Yeah.
Give me one moment here, look at these sign, and I'll let you come on up.
Checking accounts, that could be next week?
Yes.
What up, Joe? Regarding the abatement where there was a revaluation on two lots that were shown as combined, is there a deed recorded in New York County Registry?
Yes.
Reflecting the new as one lot?
Yes, it was combined before, it was combined before the April first date.
Okay, where are we now? Okay.
Liaison restructure.
We are liaison restructure.
So some discussion based on the amount of work and the, I think, the amount of work needed for some upcoming projects and budget constraints that we're going to have, and the dissolving of one committee brought us to have a conversation to possibly consider moving some things around.
Well, we're, what we're doing is we're talking about changing up the way that we're doing our budget process this year. We're pondering the thought of each liaison helping the department.
Rather than the whole board.
Yeah, instead of the whole board, the liaison helping the department alongside the finance liaison. And hopefully be able to make a quicker process through, so that we don't have to worry about having all the departments coming in all at once during the whole finance committee thing. So that the liaison is part of the budget process and would be able to relay everything back to the finance committee. So by doing that, we were looking through the, who had what, and Ed was loaded up, loaded in a lot of them.
All the big dollar ones.
Yeah, you had all the big ones. So, you know, so we, we're thinking what we're going to do is we're going to grab, grab one from you, give one to Dan.
And kind of make, Tom's got Warren Finance and Treasury, kind of just make him municipal, municipal management, all of these values. So give him kind of codes and just shift a little bit.
Yeah, so I'd be giving up that. Talking about me doing the roads.
Yep, I'll give up the roads and give that to you.
I figured I'd do that, just so, because this year, we, last year, when we were talking about going through the budget process, we were talking about doing the capital improvement things and this and that, so I kind of helped him through that, because I kind of implemented that anyway, so. And Dan, you are going to get the Mary Grant. I think that's the only changes, correct?
Yep, so it'll be, you'll have the rec, Mary Grant, and you'll have the rec and roads.
Yep.
Tom will have municipal management, which essentially is all of the town hall, APAT and Cemetery. Dan will continue with the school, Conservation and Forest, Mary Grant, and Ed will have his hands full of the fire department.
Sounds like you're going to have your hands full of the fire department.
Yeah.
So just a little shifting.
It'll work out great.
Better.
Yeah, so same budget season's coming, it wouldn't be fair to have you have all that on your shoulders, so.
Do we need a motion on this?
No, I think that's fine.
Good.
This is something we.
Yep.
Okay, resignation.
It's kind of lengthy, I'll read as quickly as I can, but the individual asked that it be read aloud, and Dan is the liaison and approved it. So to the Board of Selectmen, due to a number of reasons, I have made the decision to resign from the Conservation and Forest Committee. In the, in the few years of being on this committee, there has been little to no forward progress made in any area that would be truly benefit to the town of Acton. The past efforts before I joined the group have yielded very positive conservation efforts, such as the acquisition of Goat Hill and the Mary Grant Preserve. Both of these properties are enjoyed and appreciated by countless Acton residents. Any forward progress for this committee has stalled due to lack of participation, meaning we cannot get a full, consistent roster, as well as a focused effort to forest the town forest, which I feel not in any way, shape, or form benefits the town of Acton. Throughout the past three years, as the promotion of harvest was the focus on the town, the town forester chaired the committee, I became increasingly concerned that the town policy was not being followed. I did bring these concerns to the board and appreciate the process in voicing my concerns in regards to town conflict. As a result, the town forester's job description was reviewed, and it was also decided that he could no longer chair the committee or vote on forest harvest decisions. I felt that something was truly wrong with the process. Harvesting the town forest will have nothing but negative impacts on what should be protected environment for wildlife and delicate systems. The wetlands are home to migratory birds, including nesting areas for blue heron, along with a known sprawling area for brook trout. All birds are protected under the Federal Migratory Bird Treaty Act of nineteen eighteen. This area of Acton is enjoyed by sportsmen and recreational hikers and would be a true loss if the area is disturbed. Again, there is no benefit to the town, just a financial gain to those who are involved in the har, harvest as outlined in the town policy. There are also historical values to the parcel, and there is a cemetery of the early eighteen hundred homesteads which once occupied the area. Moving forward, I feel the Conservation Forestry Committee should be dissolved. And here's why. The Mary Grant Committee serves as the best example of conservation in Acton. It's preserved, educational, and has the active role in the community. Next, the role of the town forester has changed over time, once more demanding the stipend and the need for this position should be examined closely by the selectmen. I would ask you to review the work for the past five or ten years to see if the stipend is even warranted. The forestry plan submitted four or five years ago was not covered by the stipend, this was a separate cost. Purpose of the Conservation and Forestry Committee is clearly, is not clearly defined and has derailed in my observation. As you can tell, I'm quite passionate about the conservation, especially those close to home. This is why I originally joined the committee. However, without an ordinance, this committee has made no progress. It has lacked direction, leading to turnover and little interest in folks participating. Some very valuable people have left the group, including Wes Ham, Carl Davis, and Denise Bodwin, great people with vast knowledge. In closing, no matter what you decide, please consider this my formal resignation and post as a vacancy as you continue to seek volunteers. Please feel free to contact me with any concerns. Respectfully, Andy Grazer.
That's good points. There's stuff that we obviously got to look into. It's unfortunate that we can't get this committee rolling. And he's right, there hasn't been a whole lot done, because the participation's been lack, and they did get stuck on that one issue there for quite a while. And so, yeah, we got things we've got to discuss.
We're back to last week, we appointed someone thinking we'd have a forum, and with this resignation, we're back to not having one.
I mean, I think at this point, we, it's not like we're going to dissolve it today. We have to, obviously, put the bird on, put the individual on the committee, and, but it, you know, and I don't want to deter anybody from joining the committee. If we can get some people on before the, let's get some people on, let's get, this committee, if you want something, but, but what we talked about, when we were talking about the Lincoln Schoolhouse and this and that, we were talking about combining the conservation with, I can't remember what I called it, but it was combining two things together to add that in, so that the school, the school buildings and our town properties.
Conservation and historic.
Yeah.
Yep.
You know, that might be something we still want to look into, but I think this is a discussion for another time. But thanks, Andy, for your time.
I'll make a motion with, we accept his resignation with regret. Second?
All in favor? We are down to public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight? I don't see any.
Has there been any follow-up on the, I'm sorry, I don't recall his name, the individual that came who was living someplace? He was talking about trucks coming down their road, and we were going to talk to the.
You talking about San Pedro?
No, I think.
French.
Oh.
Has there been any follow-up on that? And have we gotten back to the resident?
Nope, the road liaison was.
I called.
Oh, I'm sorry, David.
I called the company that he was complaining about.
Oh, you did?
Yep. And we had a discussion about it and.
It's all good?
Yeah, not happy, but understood. Well, I hope.
Not happy about?
The fact that he had to go all the way around to get to Milton.
There's a road posted sign there, right?
Right. Oh, yeah, no, I explained it to him.
He may not be, he may not be watching this. Could we send a note to him?
Sure.
Letting him know what happened and.
Yeah, no, I called, I called the individual the next day that he spelled out and.
Oh, did you speak to the resident that was here?
No, no.
That's what Tom's asking. You talk to the resident and let him know that something happened.
No, I talked, no, I talked to the, the company that he was.
You, you have his name and everything, right?
I have his name.
Yeah, good, great, thank you. Thank you for doing that. So, you know, I, I got trucks and I hate having to.
Oh, I know, yeah, it's.
But it is what it is, you know, when the signs up, you just can't go.
Maybe French Street is a road that we want to put on the, you know, on the paving list sometime, you know? I went down it, it is a mess.
Well, the paving's terrible, but that's not the problem.
Right.